Good evening, please, uh, please join us in saluting the flag honoring our nation.
At my flag's leadings?
To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of Japan, one nation, one God, and just for...
Thank you very much. This is the regular business meeting of the West Side Board of Selectmen on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we have the present agenda, the warrants for the school and the town are being circulated around, being worked on as we speak. Um, and we have minutes from the last meeting, do I hear any motion?
Motion to approve. My second question.
Any discussion about some minutes? No, all those in favor of docking at the end, all those opposed. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the business, business, business meeting of the West Side Board of Selectmen will be, uh, uh, on April ninth, April ninth, 'cause that's already right here. I guess, uh, Selectmen's comments and announcements, uh, we have, uh, on Wednesday, April eighteenth, uh, a joint workshop of Board of Selectmen and the Department of Marine Resources, um, to deal with, or talk about, uh, marine leases?
Aquaculture leases.
Yeah, aquaculture leases, that's what I'm looking for.
Nice to just help.
At six P M. at the school, at the school.
Yes.
We, um, reserved the school in the case we needed the party. Um, any other announcements?
Hello? Well, I guess I can say that, um, I was at a, um, long range planning event sponsored by the University of Maine and the NOAA, the, the people who bring you the weather. Um, it was concerned with long range, um, adapt, adaptations that towns might be needing to make in terms of, particularly for us, um, the rising tides, that we are having higher tides and lower drains than we have, and that ultimately, um, we may be needing to think about, um, doing some raising of road beds, particularly where, in those places where we come close to the, the waterline, Boston Road particularly, um, will, will need some attention. Um, but it was a very interesting, uh, thing, we fortunately in West Side, we're high on the ledge, so we won't not be inundated too many more times or much higher as we go forth and forth into the century. This is pool maps and stuff that you can look up and see whether or not our house is going to be underwater at any point. So, pretty interesting, not many houses are being there, we're good.
Yeah, we have, um, how do you flood maps and new ones? There's only like about four or six houses in the whole town that are in danger.
Yeah, we...
We're lucky.
Our family land may lose a little bit of salt pile to, uh, rising tides, but most, mostly the town is in good shape.
Thank you. Thanks for going to that thing.
It was really very interesting.
It was?
Yeah, yeah, it really was. To see what some of the other towns are facing, um, really interesting.
Uh, citizens' comments, any citizens' comments? Any committee or department or work group reports on how they're scheduled? We'll go on to regular business areas. We have some appointments. We have appointments for the, uh, for the Energy Committee, we have, uh, David Hennessy, Steve Hinchman, and David Driver for the newly reformed, I guess, Energy Committee, um, which would make total, I think, four?
Three.
Three members?
Just three, just...
Okay, so far. Any, um, motion on, on those three to the Energy Committee?
I move that we appoint David Hennessy, Steve Hinchman, and David Driver to the Energy Committee.
Do I hear a second?
My second question.
Any discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor of those appointments, and all those opposed. Those appointments are appointed. Thank you, anybody serving stepping up. We have all these signatures going around, uh, the election clerks all need to be avoided and voted and appointed.
I think you could, um, in the past, as we've done them, the election clerks as presented.
Okay.
Rather than read through all twenty-seven names.
Okay, we have a list of, uh, election clerks, these are folks that help out with the elections which go on for from eight in the morning till eight at night, and there's really a lot of work to be done that most people aren't aware of, and there are a lot of names, which, um, I will just ask that we appoint these folks as presented.
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion?
Although, I just have to ask, should I recuse myself since I'm on the list?
Uh, probably should.
I should.
Probably should.
Or then, take it away.
I make a motion, we accept. They come there watching, clocks as listed.
I'll second that, and please, um, Carly Megan Owen, yeah, all those in favor and all those opposed. Great, thank you. And thanks to all these folks that, uh, couldn't pull the election off without them.
It's a really fun job.
I know, I know.
It's probably about to get more complicated.
Yes.
Oh, these are my... Okay, next we have item number two, the quick claim deed, it's, uh, lot one, I mean, so, uh, R one lot six. Francis Cape of Living Trust, Adam, would you please give us a quick rundown?
Sure. In short, the, there was a lien against this, against this property back in the nineties, the lien was never discharged. The property is currently in the process of being sold, uh, the treasurer, tax clerk treasurer Julie House has passed along that all outstanding balances have been taken care of on this account, it's simply the lien wasn't discharged, which was an error long ago, so the Selectmen are asked to do a quick claim deed to clean, you know, to clean this up. It would be so...
Right, how are you?
I'm good.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
I move that we, um, grant the quit claim deed for lot zero one, so, excuse me, lot R zero one, lot oh six, because the, uh, the lien has been dis, should have been discharged.
Do I hear a second?
My second question.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of granting the quick claim deed? And all those opposed, that quick claim deed is granted. Uh, let's see, we have Larry Barrington? Okay. Um, why don't you explain to us, uh, what it is you need, Larry?
And what it is, I've had my license probably twenty to twenty-five years, kind of my license in the town of West Side. Year ago last, uh, November, I had surgery in my foot, they put two stainless steel plates. So, I forfeited my license for like the last year, and the surgeon told me, you can't be in my digging no more, none of that, so... But my foot is here, good and all, and I've been to a couple crime meetings and going there, and there's, uh, let me think here. And I can, you know, I can go digging, and there's gonna be an available license this year. And I guess in the new ordinance there, they put in that they disposed of that license. And I'm trying to understand, you know, why I can't be available really for this license. And, you know, I've read this ordinance and read it, and there's a couple things net controversy saying that, you know, it's not saying that it's be disposed of, but it's also saying one to two years, one to three to five, everything, you're eligible, different things I've got all mic in this ordinance saying that, and they done a vote on that in the last, uh, October, year ago last October, here in the meeting, warning them, and they never voted on it. And I guess in between then, in the October meeting, they talked to you, I guess, and said that it was, you know, to go ahead and put that in the ordinance and all. So I'm just trying to, trying to understand why, I'm sixty-three years old, it's not like I'm gonna be digging in much anyway. And Dave knows this, I believe, and all, but, and I just don't understand why I can't be eligible to get that license that they're gonna throw in the garbage. I've had my license all this time in the town, I lived across the street thirty-six, thirty-three years, I mean, I just don't understand. That one license they're gonna throw away, me digging is not gonna hurt nothing. I understand when they done that, there was few clients, but I talked to all the days, and every one of them seemed to jam in and say, everybody agreed, they think, there's no reason I can't get that license, every other guy in there.
Would you like to talk to Eric Condon?
Yeah, I was asked to come here for this reason, um, Warren's...
I know, it's not personal against Warren.
No, it is nothing personal.
We've been friends forever.
What, what has happened is, um, we had a reduction in clams, this is probably why Larry decided to give up his license and go to work at B I W. Um, we still haven't gotten the clams that we had before, so we decided, it took us two years to put this process into effect through the town, to be able to eliminate licenses by attrition, because I did not wanna turn around and start taking licenses away. Oh, you had, you've only had your license three years, so I'm gonna gain it, you know what I mean? So people that didn't put their time in for conservation work, or the surveys, there's a certain requirement, you have to have five hours of season, twelve hours conservation time. Um, when you don't put your time in, you don't get your license the next year. We decided this would be a motivation for people that actually wanted to get a license, to keep their license. So, he falls in the category where it took us, he gave up his license, it took us actually several years to get this in the ordinance, where we were getting rid of it by attrition, um, and now Larry's come back and he wants the license. So, you know, it's gonna probably take, if we go out, we're doing a survey with the, with the V M R, in April, see how many clams are actually available. We do, we're gonna be required to do it anyways, um, we scheduled it for the April twenty-sixth, but, um, if all of a sudden we decide that, yeah, we can afford to put a couple biggers on them, we will. I don't see it happening, but, I mean, what the, what he was talking about as far as the one to five years, that is, if he continues to put an hour, even just an hour, in the next couple of years, and all of a sudden our survey says, yes, we can afford to give out that license, first of all, we get it through the town, we have changed the ordinance, this, this all takes a process of over a year or so, and then we'll say, you'll be first in line because you put an hour in, or two hours in every year, or you can put twelve in, you know what I mean?
That's saying in the back, isn't it, saying back time, you've gotten enough years.
Exactly.
And I've had mine.
Yeah.
Like I say.
So you'd be first in line?
Yeah, but...
If one comes available, but right now, there's not a license available because we have gotten rid of them by attrition because we don't have the product available. So if we do the survey and it says, okay, we've got enough to give out a couple more licenses, we've done this in the past, it's been quite a while. We were at ten licenses for years, and then we went and gave out six more, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, it was here.
And, and right now, you know...
When I talked to all the guys, they didn't put any good digging in the last year, one, everybody I've talked to, Dave, even Timmy, it was everybody.
No, we don't have enough flats, or we'll do the surveys like the D M R wants us to do, it's a new, it's a new...
Yeah, and we know how that survey goes, too, Warren.
I'm telling you, we're doing it by the book, that's the way it is.
Okay, yeah.
That's the only thing I can do.
Well, like I say, the ordinance, you know, I thought like, uh, when you had that crime meeting, you guys didn't vote on that.
We actually had, we did, and we actually had to go to town...
I got the minutes right here, my end, you didn't vote on it.
We actually had to go to the town meeting and set up the ordinance.
You didn't vote on it, I got the minutes right here for that meeting and the next month, and in between that meeting, you went to him and said, whatever, and had it done, but you didn't vote on it.
The committee...
It says right in there, it was not voted.
It was not at that meeting, but later, later meetings it was. Um, I don't have, I don't have...
I got them right here, in September, it was not voted on, they discussed it, did not vote on it, and then it says, oh, business October, that Warren went in motion to the Selectmen to put it in, that's what they're doing.
And that was, that was actually approved at that meeting.
Are you saying the clam committee, they didn't vote on it?
The clam committee, I'm saying, didn't vote on it, it's right here in the minutes.
We all agreed upon it, I mean, that was the way it was done, I wouldn't have gone to the town meeting.
It says right here, you, some, some agreed, it says in the minutes, I got it right there if you wanna read it, one way Paul wrote it. Some did agree, not everybody, but, so you did not vote on it.
Well, it is in the ordinance.
Yeah.
It is in the ordinance.
However, it wound up in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Wound up in the ordinance.
It was quite a process to get it in the ordinance, too, and at this point, the D M R's is on my back, um, making sure that we do survey, if not once, but twice a year, to make sure that that product, what's available. And if you wanna go to the surveys and do the best you can, you're welcome to, you have to do it, you know how it works.
All right, that's...
And I'll even let you choose the flag, you know what I mean? It's just, this is what we have to do, this is how the process works, so...
With that one license, though, I don't see how really I'm gonna hurt anything.
I agree, I totally agree, but I can't open the floodgates for you because then everybody and their brother...
We don't have a license available at the moment.
Yeah, there's gonna be one available.
But the, uh...
There will be one available, there's spoken of, one.
And Mr. Barrington's first on the list, right?
Yes.
As long as he has, he's...
But we're getting rid of licenses by attrition, so in other words, it's not available.
Yeah.
Um, if we decide, if the survey says that we could decide to give out a level license or two licenses, and I agree, Larry, you're not gonna hurt anything, but I can't sit here and tell you, okay, we'll give out another license, first of all, it's gonna take a year process, but second of all, if I do that for you, I open up the floodgates for everybody and their brother, and we don't have that product available, we really don't.
Go ahead.
That's why I'm here. And it's not personal, it's really not.
But I love talking to my lawyer about it anyway, just have him go through the ordinance and all that, I don't need to do that.
Yeah.
Have him go through it because it's just really, you know, crazy and all the whole ordinance, so...
It's unfortunate, Larry, and I feel bad for you, but there's not a lot we can do.
Yeah.
The law is, the law, and we worked hard to get that law the way it is. And, um...
What I, what I have tried to do is not take licenses, this is why we went to this method. Um, in other towns, they've got literally taking people's livings away by five...
They cut it, but, you don't have to put, how many are you gonna cut of this, or win that ordinance? You can just take license, so...
No, if somebody doesn't put their time in...
Right, say seven guys don't, this year, just like last year, you got seven licenses.
Then we're gonna say, okay, we could probably give out some more licenses, that's why...
And then it's not a year for somebody to wait for it.
But it, it's a process, you have to wait a year, you have to go to a town meeting, change the ordinance, blah, 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 so it's, it took us two years to get this installed. That's the way it works.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
You're doing my...
Warren, thank you very much.
Just got done eating a couple slawp, so I just got out of work.
Thanks. Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, Warren.
Have a good night.
Okay, um, Mr. Pruitt, Pine Tree Engineering is gonna talk tonight, Sabino Road, speaking of rising ocean.
Rubbing his hands together.
So far as the ocean, you're seeking roads.
You're on, sir. We, uh, we asked Mr. Pruitt to, Adam has spoken with him, um, previously about, uh, the problem down at the Sabino Swamp on the Sabino Road, and I believe, uh, discussion with the Budget Committee led to us inviting Mr. Pruitt to come to explain more, I think it's sort of probably...
You want a two-second synopsis?
Go ahead.
So in short, um, Sabino Road, the swamp has been a problem with flooding over. About a year ago, the town applied for a culvert grant through D E P, we were awarded the maximum amount of ninety-five thousand dollars. So at that point, we had to get the project engineered, we approached, uh, Mr. Pruitt at Pine Tree Engineering, um, he's done some, he at that time had done some preliminary review of the project, felt that it was a two-part project with, uh, the culvert and the needing to raise the road, which was of course more cost, so, uh, we'll be able to take it from there.
Good summary. So I put together a preliminary cost estimate, just to give you the shock trigger off that.
Everybody likes that.
Everything I'm gonna talk about tonight is preliminary, there's been no final decisions, it's just basically some options to look at. So I brought some plans, which you fellows may have to slide over if you wanna see them. Try to get it so everybody can see. So as I'm setting this up, it kind of is two projects, but at that, at this time, I'm looking at it as one project on that sheet of paper, okay? So you have your culvert grant, as Adam mentioned, and the culvert grant is ninety-five thousand dollars. And first discrepancy I've already found is that in the town's application, the plan was to install, it was thought at the time to be a five-foot diameter culvert. What's there now is a forty-eight inch, a four-foot culvert on the one end, on the outlet end, and thirty-six inches on the inlet, so, somebody extended it once upon a time with a smaller pipe.
So what, excuse me, what is it, it's forty-eight?
Forty-eight on the outlet and thirty-six on the inlet, so it looks like somebody jammed the thirty-six in to extend the roadbed over the slope at one point.
Increased the flow.
It's about the rising of the...
So, but the trick now with these storm, uh, stream crossings has got it, gotten very technical in the state. Number one, you need to get an Army Corps, U S Army Corps of Engineers permit for anything that you're doing work in the water. And there's a lot of, some of you may have heard of these stream smart crossing designs now that both D E P and the Corps are promoting. What it means is that most culverts are restricting the flow in streams, uh, most every road, and I can't think of one that, that isn't with the new standards for sizing them. The way they're sized now is you have to measure the stream, either upstream or downstream, someplace where it hasn't been eroded from a road washout or filled, where it's pretty much natural state, and you measure that width, and then it's supposed to be twenty percent wider than that for your structure. So in this particular stream, I measured fourteen feet, about a hundred feet downstream. So if, simple math, fourteen times one point two, you do sixteen and change, so we round that up to seventeen feet. So a five-foot culvert is not gonna do the trick to get the permits. So that's one part of the project, so therefore, I'm looking at a seventeen-foot wide by six-foot box culvert as one option for the stream crossing. And everybody thinks I'm crazy when I tell them this stuff, uh, but that, those are the rules. We did one on Basin Road to Pittsburgh a few years ago, that was a twelve footer on a very small string. And we worked a twenty-two footer down there on another project, which I've been trying to get a permit for that one for almost a year now, it's, uh, the permit, yeah.
Does it make a difference, apparently it does make a difference where you measure this, I mean...
Yes.
I do know that most of that stream going north has been at some point, um, drenched out a little bit from sediment flooding it and branches and one of the trees falling down, so where did you measure it?
I measured it south of this crossing, approximately a hundred feet down.
Where it, why?
There's a Y that comes in from Sabino Road, I can show you.
Yeah, I know, I don't know where that is.
There's a hole in behind there, uh, I don't know who was, uh, can give you a little more.
But that's more of a marsh area, right?
No, that's a pure stream channel.
Okay, will you back that far it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Very clear cut, it's a very, very well-defined banks.
So I'm just questioning, is another area that would qualify for the permit process that's narrow?
They're gonna look for what's considered to be the stream.
Yeah.
So, you can't go find the narrowest spot, nor do you wanna find...
I know you're not...
Yeah, I've been down that road, same, same thing, well...
And actually, right at the outlet of this, it's actually wider right here because it's all scoured out, so we don't measure that, that's not considered, I mean, that would work against you. So, you really have to, you're not gonna sneak this by anybody.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying sneak it by.
They're gonna come out, they're gonna look at it, and they don't always agree with us, you know, sometimes they push us.
No, I'm just saying that it seems a very large...
Oh, I agree.
Culvert, unnecessarily large culvert.
I don't disagree.
It doesn't even make sense.
But those are the laws, so that's...
From D E P?
Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, yeah.
They both, they both look at the same, you know, same rules, I mean, they're all going by the same design principle. What's interesting in these projects, you're actually exempt from the D E P because it's an existing crossing, so you can do maintenance replacement exempt. Usually we'll set a permit by rule as part of the core process, just so they're notified as well.
And this is non-feable process?
No.
Wasting time and money. But anyhow, sorry.
The good news is you have ninety-five thousand dollars from the D E P to put towards this, so, the bad news is if you wanted to replace this without the grant, it's the same rules, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I would rather focus on the positive, that you had you have ninety-five thousand to put towards this project. So let me just talk about the product a little more here.
Half and rather than half empty.
Yeah, half of them. So that culvert crossing that we were talking about is right here, okay, various billboards back to this direction that ends this way, so north facing out. So what we're looking at, that stream crossing, it's, it's quite a unique situation because you have a thirty-six inch culvert across the driveway, Sugar Hill Lane here, from, out of the swamp here, on this area, which drains the ponds up above, and then it hits a drainage channel slash road ditch, crosses your culvert, then goes down through Van Cove Creek, and there's a smaller little stream tributary coming off Sabino Road here. So when looking at that, what the proposal would be, the box culvert as I've described, because once you install a box culvert like this, now you have some pretty serious drop-offs. Really, we're looking at shoulder widening and guardrails as part of the project as well. That's in the cost estimate that you're looking at there. In Adam's discussions with me, that's one issue, when that's, that's where your D E P money could go towards that, but the other problem is the road is low down here, you all know. The existing grade is this dashed one, if you can see that here, okay, so you've got quite a hollow on the road. Here's our existing, is the existing culvert, it's a little oval, if you can see it, the proposed box culvert will be that rectangle. So one option would be to raise the road three feet at its low point down here, and then taper it back in here and taper it in back here, which would result in six hundred and fifty feet of road work. It's basically how we strip the pavement, add gravel, build it up, put your side slopes in. Looking at that cost estimate, this part of the road work is probably a value of somewhere around fifty thousand, I'm about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I'm showing you there. So you obviously have some choices here, you can do the, the overall large project, or you can focus on just doing the culvert. Problem is, if you do the culvert, that's great, but it doesn't fix the problem when you have flooding down on this end. And it's not, what's interesting to me is there's no cross culvert down here, the only one is up here, there's a culvert right here. So in that sag, there's basically standing water on both sides.
Hmm, you can see it in the wet times of year, too, when we were up there.
Right. So we have, and certainly some of the historical photos that you sent with the D E P with the cars plowing through the water and such, so... So that would be the idea, to try to raise, raise the road above, you know, for, if it was gonna flood anyway, so you've, you've got two different issues, you've got water building up here, which may or may not be from, I'm sure that some used to bypass this and end up down here, but also the wood stream side of that area. So you're still gonna have the wet area in there, just because of the geography, as you can see, water goes downhill, so... In order to try to fix that, the recommendation would be to raise the road up, and that's what was in your application, basically raise the road up three feet. You know, the thought at that time, without having the survey and drawn up, the thought was three or four hundred feet, well, the way I'm looking at it, it's more like six hundred and fifty feet to get a good match, but you can see we're not filling much on the ends, it's just basically to match it in, but you're talking three feet in.
Is that going all the way to the concrete, with road beds on the left? Is that going all the way to the concrete, uh, with, with roadbeds on the left?
Just about right there, yes.
Where the high, high ground is?
Yeah, the corner will be right back here, yeah.
Like, we'd be going right to, like, Van Cove?
Van Cove is just, I didn't quite survey that far.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
How much higher would this culvert be?
Higher?
Is it, is it gonna be higher than, than the existing culvert?
It's, it's gonna be a good foot or so, foot and a half above the existing one to the top. The big thing about these box culverts is they require us to embed them two feet below the stream, and then fill in with gravel and cobble so that you reach your natural stream bed.
It's what the fish do.
This is scary.
So, where we're headed, so. So, you have to oversize your structures and actually fill the bottoms. We prefer a box culvert because then you have a total structural support underneath it as opposed to just the precast footings, which are done in some cases, but typically when you're in swampy areas, you can get a lot of differential settlement. So, we prefer the full box, you have a much better-
I think it costs more money to set the foot than any one.
Right. That's right, sorry, you know, it's a little bit of swamp. We've done a few of the box culverts, they work well. Like I said, we did one a couple years ago on Basin, not quite this large, but good size for the size of that stream. They gave me the same looks, so.
Yeah, I, we gonna fill, uh, towards various new roads and ways, too, probably?
Not much. Pretty much matches right here at Sugar Hill Lane and Watch Drive. You get those driveways right there. Pretty well, it matches right there. So, I'm looking at the end of the project, basically, right at that Sugar Hill Lane drive.
And you're looking at guardrails as well?
Guardrails around the crossing. At about a hundred feet on this side, a hundred and twenty-five feet. Couple of issues is, these are still preliminary, we haven't talked to neighbors or anything, but it's pretty tight right here to make this work, because it drops off the road now. convergence of, this would be looking at the road, across the road itself. So, this is the stream channel, this is what it does now. Basically, it serves ups and downs. That's Sugar Hill Lane Drive here, here's Sabino Road here. So, this is looking at a profile on the stream. So, the stream does this up and down. Here's that scour pool at the other edge of the road now. So, that would be built up with guardrails right there. And then, another issue that I'm concerned with is the construction of this, how we do this, because typically, when you put these in, you close the road for two days. Usually, a day to prep it, get it excavated, remove the old culvert, a day to put it in, put it back. So, you have a day in a row with quite a few residents on the other end, so. But I, I haven't talked to, to the town about this yet, but I'd like to talk to the neighbors, see if we could create some type of a temporary detour, at least one lane coming off Sugar Hill Lane, to put in a temporary culvert of some type in the drive, so we can keep one lane of traffic through there.
That's what that fifteen thousand?
That's what that number is, yes.
And do you have-
We haven't spoke to the abutter or anything.
Well, if the, if the abutter is as nice as we hope, um, then what kind of permissions do you need to put in an extra lane of road?
Well, it's, number one is temporary. You would have to get a temporary easement from them.
And what about from DEP and all those people who-
It would all have to be part of the whole permit process. Is it, 'cause they, they, they take a lot of interest in how you're gonna build this as well as what you're gonna put in, in the end.
Yeah.
There'll be a need to bypass pump and coffer dams, that type of thing, to keep the stream going, unless it's pumped dry at the time, which ideally it would be. The time of year that they restrict you typically is July fifteenth to September thirtieth, so low flow, and then the fish are not spawning or anything.
They, um, one of the reasons we were told that the road tends to sink is that it's on peak. Is that solution gonna help with that?
Well, in the long term, it's still gonna be a settlement problem. The geotechnical report that the town had done years ago basically gave you some options in that. And all the other options are really not feasible from a cost point of view, so.
It's about ten years now, maybe, yeah, eight years now, building up again, probably.
Yeah, how long's it been since you've done anything down there?
About twenty, twenty-five years, probably.
Not that long, I would think.
I was just a kid.
I don't remember anything being done.
It was, it's been a while, and we've done, I remember, something like Band-Aids for the last forty years or whatever.
Yeah, that's what'll happen, the edges will rattle, things like that.
The trees will, sorry.
We, we ran into a very similar thing on Stony Brook Road in Pittsburgh, from a swamp there, and, you know, to be honest with you, there isn't anything feasible from a cost point of view for a town to do. You know, you could do all kinds of fancy foundations, and they have, they have eighty feet of peel over there as well. It's just not feasible for a small town to be able to do anything else, so.
Rob, don't we fall under, um, on replacement guidelines for, to actually install the, the existing culvert that's there? We, we actually don't have to go by the DEP guidelines?
We do have to, because the DEP permit by rule says you have to follow the extreme design standards.
So, you can't just replace the existing that's there now with a PBI?
No, 'cause everybody would. Everybody would if you could, but, and you have to get, anytime you're in your water, you have to get a Corps permit, so.
Is more grant available this year?
So, so, on the, on the note of the grant money, one of the things that, uh, that I'm gonna be trying to do is that, don't quote me on the dates, I believe next week, there is a hazard mitigation grant opportunity for the town through Maine Emergency Management. And it could, potentially, this might be applicable to that. So, I'm gonna attend that grant session and see if that's a grant that would help us fund this project.
We have a, a title on the current grant, though.
We do, I think we have another year left.
You have till July two thousand nineteen. They, they will extend them if you need to. I've had to get Phippsburg's extended because I haven't got, they don't have a permit yet, it's been a year. The process is crazy to get these permits. Basically, it has to go in front of US Fish and Wildlife, which has an office in Oregon, about one person, reviews every project in the state.
So, that'll be at least a year doing that, so.
Well, let me just correct myself on that. There's different parts in the state, if you're in the Atlantic Standard Watershed, you, unfortunately, you're not in the Atlantic Standard Watershed, you're on the correct side of the ridge here. The Kennebec Watershed is, but not the Meadows. So, that's in your favor from a review time, but the standards are the same.
But it's still a process.
Same, same design standards, but time-wise, it will be better. It doesn't have to go to what they call Chapter Seven consultation. So, there's one woman, I love her, has every project sixty percent in the salmon, roughly the same watershed, all the Kennebec, Penobscot, all the Down East Rivers. So, any project that involves the Corps has to be reviewed by the US Fish and Wildlife. So, it's a bottleneck, unfortunately, when you get into those.
But there are extensions available?
Yes. Yeah, we go on Phippsburg. 'Cause that's the problem, the DEP gave you these, it's July one for two years, well, July one, like I mentioned earlier, you've got this in-stream work window, which is only July fifteenth. So, if you miss it one year, you're out the next year. Now, July one, your permit's, your agreement's out next year, before you can even get into it, the construction season of two thousand nineteen, so.
There's no rare animal living in the Sabino Swamp?
From what I know of, it's, it's all-
Eagles, huh?
And just, uh-
Can we move an eagle?
Out of curiosity, I guess, uh, two, two questions, I guess. One is, the, the estimates that you give us, if we did have to postpone for an additional year, I mean, would these kind of estimates still be in the ballpark, or do you foresee that there's gonna be changes in those costs?
Geez, I'd be rich if I did that.
Well, I know.
This industry doesn't change that drastically, so should be, should be longer.
And as far as where the road's gonna be raised up in that three-foot area there, is that gonna cause quite a shoulder, am we gonna have to put guardrails in that area as well, or?
No, no, I did bring some cross-sections, which would bore you to tears, but.
This is right, this is gonna work.
This would be what a cross-section of the road would look like if you sliced it right down, side to side. So, here's where we build up the road, there's your new pavement. So, again, here's your existing road, the broken line.
Yeah.
We raise it up here to your new pavement, new shoulders, and new three-to-one side slopes. We are getting beyond the right-of-way, so that's another issue we have to deal with, those total slopes. Best information I have from Mr. Beal is it's a two and a, two and a half rod right-of-way, correct? So, it's forty-one and a quarter feet. So, what we would, what we'd have to do is get permission from the abutters to extend those toes out for temporary grading easements, you're not taking their land or anything, you're just gonna extend the slope out. Which, which helps in the stability of the road, to more, we have that, so.
And generally, generally, those kind of easements aren't a challenge.
No, no, those people are cooperative.
Rob, the, uh, the culvert proposed, that's six feet, um, so you're only gonna be actually using four feet of that culvert?
Correct, that's right.
Because of the, the rock and the lava? So, is that how they, um, consider the, the culvert ultimately, there's only four feet of it, gonna be working at the time?
Yes.
On water flow?
Yeah, by seventeen foot wide, so.
Right, okay.
So, what, what you find is the heights of the culverts, from what people have today in most roads, don't change that much, it's the width.
Right.
Well, thanks for the good news.
This is nice, too.
It is, it is quite a stream, I have a surprise, and take a little-
There's a lot of water there. I suppose from a standpoint of, if we can, if that was one job, we'd be better off that way, cost-wise.
It's always better to combine it if you can, for economy of scale.
Yeah.
This is a, we got, we have that grant, thank you, ninety-five thousand grant, uh, you know, just do it.
Well, yeah, but it, we can't do it.
Seems like a lot of work for that money, too. Seems like a lo, a lot of work for that, that much money.
And they put in a area of Sabino over to Mountain Road, would that be cheaper?
We can't go right now in there, because it needs permits, right?
Birds Point Road, you mean?
No, I'm, I can get them across the road and, no, it's just ridiculous.
We can't go now into, the permit process is done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what do you need from the town to start the permit process? An, an actual town meeting vote?
No. Just congrats from the board to move forward, that's all.
And meantime, if Adam will and deal another grant, could be-
Some of the photos.
That's not a guarantee, though.
No, no, no.
This is a very highly competitive grant, the, what I'm talking about.
That would be nice.
This is an improvement from where it was fifty years ago. So, if we don't do this, my assumption is just gonna get worse and worse, and cost more and more.
Any more rules and regulations, probably?
Yes. I mean, someday, it will fail, and you'll have to replace it, and you have to follow the same rules. And it may get worse, yeah.
Well, we have, um, this is, this is just, talking off the top of my head, and we haven't talked about it yet either. We've got the ninety-five thousand grant, and, um, we foreclosed recently on a small parcel of land, a third of an acre, waterfront, which the town owns, and, uh, it's gonna go to auction, so if there's more money, it'll be potentially available, thus. So, maybe, you know, if the, uh, if the road gods are watching out for it, maybe we'll just get into town money at all, existing town money.
Well, in essence, the town has no choice, besides the guy, we can't, Sabino flooding out, it's peaking up.
And that, yeah, and that's, that's chapter two of the story, as we, probably ought to get it done, we need to-
We have to, we have to.
Bridge is more expensive. A bridge would be more expensive.
They're all rich down there.
That, that probably would be news to them.
And these are ultimate, they're just preliminary numbers.
These are my estimates, they're my, it would go out to public bid, and I'll tell you what the real cost is.
Right, I mean, it could be another hundred or-
Chairman's got something to buy, whether I'm too hard, too, I don't know.
Two hundred thousand dollars more, or a hundred thousand, or whatever it may be.
I mean, one of the thoughts that I'm having, as we're sitting here and all talking about this, and, you know, just putting this out there, what, what if we, this year, what if the town were to consider to start a specific capital account just for this? Put fifty thousand dollars and do it at a town meeting, hypothetically, put fifty thousand dollars towards it, and then, um, if we did sell this piece of property that Peter's referencing, um, we could have a special town meeting sometime in the middle of the summer or fall, whatever, to appropriate that money, if that was what the board felt was appropriate. But at the very least, if we put some money towards it this year, plan to do it the following year, it would make it so that the blow to the taxpayer might not be quite so heavy. I mean, what do you think of that?
My first thought is, it's gonna be next year anyhow, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be close.
With the permit process?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we probably need extension. I don't think you wanna commit the fifty thousand yet. If we, if the land is sold, if it is sold, you guys just like to sell that piece of property.
See if we get that over, yeah.
You know, possibly put it back in the, uh, self-banking fund.
And then go to that to fund it later?
And draw from that when we need it, but I wouldn't do it yet. We're a whole year away, we mean, possibly starting it, so I wouldn't put money in that yet, but that's my-
Just gives you the advantage of spreading over two fiscal years.
Well, no, but, but if we have a, we have a self-banking fund, we create for big projects, and there's money in there.
There is, okay.
So, I don't think, you, you, quite yet, we can wait a little bit. And just start the permit process, and start that going.
So, what does it cost to start the permitting process? Anything?
It says the permitting process, doing the design, and the, the DEP permit rule is seventy-seven bucks or something for the application fee, there's no charge for the Corps. That's the other good news.
It's just about you doing it now.
Yeah, we just submitted.
Yeah.
This is, this is the crux of it, we have, you know, laid out some more details here.
Right.
One, one important part is that temporary detour, so we're gonna talk to the landlord, 'cause that, 'cause it's gonna impact, 'cause what happens here, there's some photos, if you wanna pass them around, but you have the, the swamp here, the drains across, the culvert under Sugar Hill Lane, there's also another stream that comes out of the woods here. So, somehow, you know, my idea is if we could somehow come off Sugar Hill Lane, and then come up here and just cross the stream there, and then remove it all later.
How, uh, how much distance do you need on a temporary road?
Hundred feet, yeah, roughly a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Just enough so, you know, one lane of traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I would ask the board to consider giving it a go over the permit process.
I would, uh, do we need to?
Why not?
I think you should.
Yeah.
It's on then.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, so we can do it.
All right, um, all right, the, uh, number four, me, is blessed to the department, please go ahead, and surprise, uh, Mr. Prue of Pine Tree Engineering to commence the, uh, preliminary of the permitting process.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded. Seconded.
Any discussion?
One question, one question for me, should we leave the, the road portion of the title project for now? We always do something different later if you chose to.
Let's leave it in.
You have to.
Yeah.
It doesn't really affect the permitting process, but the plans are obviously connected.
Yeah, let's leave it all intact for now.
That's what we do.
If you just change the culvert, it's still gonna be a lot of water, so you said we could deal with that water.
That's right.
All in favor? And all in favor? Very good?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we'll get to that soon?
Yes, yeah, I'll let you know. But the, uh, you can't think of any idea for me right now, but.
What's happening?
Later on.
We ought to figure out who the neighbors are.
Yeah.
Stop talking to them, that's probably the first thing if you can look that up.
Yeah, we can look that up then. Thank you very much for taking the time to come.
You're welcome, thanks for having me.
Think you did a much better job than I would have trying to wing it.
At least understand a little more what the permit process means, and how little leeway there is on this at all.
There isn't.
We're locked in.
And how the federal government is. You're not the first person to give me that look, so.
Adam's gonna hold big sale.
What's that?
Adam's gonna hold big sale.
Brown, Brownie's.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, moving on. We are, where are we at?
Yeah.
Um, I have an author.
All right, uh.
Um, Victoria, um, Bounde from the, um, the Cascobay Estuary people, um, asked me the other day, would the town be interested, uh, willing to host a meeting at the Grange Hall where we would hear a report on some research that was done through them in Seagrant, um, last year, on the health of the estuary? And I said, well, I'd be very happy to welcome you all, but if you want the town's hosting, I need to check with my fellow selected persons.
I don't think the town can, can grant us.
Oh, no, they have permission with the Grange Hall.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they've already done that, but they would like a host that's not them, because they're all about community, you know? So, um, so this does not commit us to any expenditure, it just says that we're, we're participating as receivers of this report, essentially. It's, um, mid-May, and I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my note.
Sounds harmless enough.
I, I don't.
Then that's what we said about wing farm.
Well, there is no financial commitment, it's just.
We did that too.
We're fine, that's enough.
It's not supposed to cost five thousand dollars, not a penny more.
Well, I guess I would just say that the money has already been spent as far as the expenditures go, for the, for the research.
My side of the law, let's, let's go ahead, um, they're a public service organization.
Yeah.
There are factions of the public that believe they're doing an excellent job, and there are other factions of the public that think otherwise. So I think we as a town should go for it.
Right. My second, Beth. Then I will say, welcome, everybody, the town West Black welcomes you.
Any other, other, thank you. No, everybody? No, okay. Then, with that in mind, we have an executive session scheduled?
Well, I don't see these staff members that would be involved in that here, Peter, so.
Do we need that staff?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
For the child enforcement, yes.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, then, do I hear a motion to table and postpone?
You certainly do. Is there a reason he's not here?
Not that I'm aware of at this time, I will find out tomorrow, though.
Because I think, I know we can't do it without him, but this is an issue that's been going on in this town for years, and I think that people are really getting tired of it, and we need to, need to do something.
Yes.
Is this? Never mind.
I think we've cleared off long enough, so if we get it scheduled?
Yes, I'm gonna reach back out to him, I'll see him tomorrow, and we'll follow up. Yeah, I'm sure it was an oversight.
He, you know, he either oversited it or something, something important, you know?
Yep, I'll follow up.
Ellis doesn't, Ellis doesn't draw up a call very often.
No, he doesn't, that's why.
No, so.
We're excited, yeah.
So the motion to table? Motion to table?
Yeah.
My second.
All in favor? As table? Well, not known?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, uh, any discussion? No, hearing none, and all in due, we are adjourned at six twenty-four.